All right, I'm going to call to order the Thursday, December 21st, 2023 Norton Select Board Meeting. In attendance are Denise Luciano, Alec Rich, Steve Hornsby, and myself. Mega Arts was not able to make it tonight, and the town manager is here as well. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Peter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we don't have any appointments, resignations, or retirements this evening, so we will skip past that on the agenda. And then, everybody received the minutes from the November 13th, 2023 joint meeting with the School Committee and the Finance Committee, and the November 30th, 2023 Select Board Minutes. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes unless anybody has any comments or changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 13th, 2023, joint meeting, and then November 30th, 2023.
Go ahead, a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, and then, any abstains?
Abstention.
Okay. All right, so we have three yeses and one abstention, and the minutes are approved. We have some additional license renewals tonight. Just trying to find them here. All right. And we'll do this, we'll kind of do this the same way we did it before. We'll just do them all at once.
I got it.
Oh, it's only one page?
Yes. Only eight.
Wow.
Yeah, here we go.
All right, so take it away, Alec.
Okay, so I read this as a motion, making a motion to approve the 2024 renewal licenses. Argium Brewing LLC, 33 West Main Street, malt-only pouring permit, CB, live entertainment, MASE for live entertainment. Fillmore Nathan Post, number 8049, BFW of USA, 38 Summer Street, Club AA, CB, live entertainment, jukebox, dancing, One Coin Operator Pool Table, MASE for live entertainment, jukebox, dancing, Coin Operator Pool Table. Norton Jade LLC, DBA Norton Jade, 175 Mansfield Ave., Suite 4, subject to payment of outstanding taxes, CB AA, CB. Mary E. Manchester, DBA Sportsman's Cafe, 13 South Worcester Street, CB AA, CB, jukebox and pool table, MASE for jukebox and pool table. Tournament Players Club of Boston at Great Woods LLC, 400 Arnold Palmer Boulevard, CB AA, CB. And Yzakar Common Vexualis, CB, to serve food at tables. Oxo Burrow Restaurant Group, Inc., DBA The Best Sandwich Shop, 175 Mansfield Ave., CB. Hyatt LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, 246 East Main Street, CB. Tasty's Norton LLC, DBA Tasty's Bagels, Cold Treats &amp; More, 103 West Main Street, CB. As of 12/21/23.
One second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of those? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. That is unanimous. Next up is the, I'll get, let Mike give us a little color on this. This is the seasonal proportion form we have to fill out every year, right?
Right. So, the main purpose of this is for towns to allocate, for example, some of their populations double over the summer, so they're allowed to get extra local licenses because of that, but we really don't have a change in our population by season.
So we just, so we just need to make a motion to approve the form with no change in population?
Right.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. It's all set. Moving on to announcements, we have a couple of announcements, and we'll turn it back over to Alec.
Okay, so the Norton Park &amp; Rec has adult pickup basketball rec games, over 30, Wednesdays, Wednesday, Tuesday, men play Thursday. Is that what that says? It's tough to read on the left-hand side.
Yes, yes.
Women play Tuesdays, men play Thursdays.
That's it, okay. Women play Tuesdays, men play Thursdays. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
I think so. It's tough to read.
Yeah.
Over 30 rec pickup game program for both men and women, obviously. Six weeks of one-and-a-half-hour games, January 9th and 11th, 16th and 18th, 23rd and 25th, 30th, and February 1st, 6th, 8th, 13th, and 15th. All games are at LG, at 38.40 bucks for Norton residents, $50 for non-residents. Got to register by January 3rd with Norton Park &amp; Rec. Must have 12 registered players for each group to hold the program. Any questions, you can talk to Melissa at Park &amp; Rec, 508-285-0228.
Yeah, it's starting over 60 ladies, but make it a half hour.
Half court.
So Norton Park &amp; Rec is also sponsoring a, I guess, an organizing program by Annalise Thompson, Fridays, January 19th, February 2nd, and February 16th, from 6:00 to 7:00 It's how to set up maintainable systems based on your organizational style. Annalise Thompson is a Certified Organizational Specialist to help you understand why you have all the clutter and how to start letting it go. Have to reserve your spot by January 12th. Questions, you can reach out to Park &amp; Rec, and the location is at the Norton Media Center.
Should we have some state of town hall sign up for that? Yeah, we should probably have the town hall sign up for that, yeah.
And it's $35 for all three classes.
Those boxes in the basement?
Yeah. All right, cool. Thank you, Alec. Does anybody else have any other announcements they would like to make? All right, so moving on to new business, Lucia is here to discuss the absentee voting and vote by mail for the town election.
Okay, Dan. Just, I just want to clarify where you opted out for the vote by mail on the town election. Absentee ballots will be available. They're not going to say vote by mail, they're going to say absentee ballots, so I just had to clarify that.
Okay.
Okay. I've got the schedule ready. Next week, I'm going to be announcing the nomination papers on January 8th for that annual town election. We're almost there. There's a schedule, it's deadlines.
Everybody does it, it's okay.
And this will be posted on the town website as well?
Oh, yeah, everything will be posted next week. It'll be on the town website, I'll put it on Facebook, I'll put it on my Facebook page for town clerk.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
All right. So, and I just want to say, so the primary, we're starting to really hop on that now. I'll be putting announcements out on that until the first of the year. So, the live early voting will be at town hall, just so you'll know.
Okay.
Okay. And that's it for me, unless you have any questions.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
All right, so I had sent you an email about
Public hearing.
About a public hearing.
This is it.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So there we go.
Yes.
All right, excellent.
This is it.
Okay. And then, just to announce, we have two select board seats up for election in the town election. In April, two Board of Assessors seats, one Housing Authority seat, two Planning Board seats, and two School Committee seats.
Correct.
Okay. And then a reminder, the town election will be on Saturday, April 27th, 2024.
I didn't put the hours on there, I put the hours, 8 to 5.
8 to 5.
And the nomination papers are available January 8th.
January 8th, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, anybody have anything else for Lucia?
Thank you, Lucia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make it easy tonight.
Yes.
Yeah.
You all have a very happy holidays.
You too.
Thank you.
You too.
Mike, Merry Christmas.
All right, Mike. Next up is we have a truck or something, or surplus.
So this is from the police department. They want to declare the 2003 Ford Windstar with 109,000 miles as surplus, and it will go on Minnesota for auction.
Where'd this come from?
It's one of the police vehicles.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'm looking for this one.
What's a Windstar? Is it like a minivan?
It's a minivan.
Is this like our heady thing?
I think they used it for
Undercover?
What's that?
Undercover.
No, for the drill team, or whatever they call it, you know, the team they go up for raids and things like that.
That's definitely low mileage for '03.
I was going to say the same thing, yeah.
We'll get something, we'll get some
I didn't think it was going to be too big for my daughter, I think about it.
Yeah, that's right. All right, does anybody want to make a motion?
So make a motion to declare the police department's 2003 Ford Windstar VIN number 2FMZA51483BB50519 as surplus. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Next up is the alcohol, drug and alcohol testing services.
So this is required as part of the Department of Transportation regulations for people with CDL licenses, and this was put out to bid by our regional services group, purchasing group.
Sircage?
Yes.
Yep.
Southeastern Regional Services Group. So, I ask that you vote to award and authorize me to sign the contract for advantage drug testing.
Is this, just a quick question, is this someone we used?
Yes.
That we've been asking for quite a few days. Okay.
Question if I may?
Yeah.
How much did this increase from the last contract?
I don't have that, it wasn't that big of an increase, the most $5.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract as written, the drug alcohol testing services contract for 1124 through 123126 to advantage drug testing and authorize the town manager to sign the contract.
A second?
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, Mike, update on the HCA negotiations.
Do you want me to take care of three items at once here?
Bang them out, yeah. So we have, what is it, number four, update on the HCA, discussion on the agreement, and the CCC regs.
Okay. So, all of them came into play together. So, I was on a seminar that the MMA put on, on the new regs, and they've really gutted what you can do in a HCA. So, right now prohibiting is any upfront payments, legal fees, then you cannot ask for an escrow or a bond or other similar payment. No in-kind, you can't ask for in-kind contributions, no charitable contributions, and the provider, the company must, has to reapply each year, and the CCC is going to review the HCAs, and if you have anything in your HCA that's not in compliance, they're going to let you know, and they're going to develop a naughty list. And they're actually working now on a model HCA, which they have not released yet, which we can use to compare, because you have to upgrade your old HCAs also, because when that, so when KANA goes to re-up their license, they're going to look at the HCA, and if it doesn't meet any of the guidelines, they're not going to renew their license until it's in compliance.
So that's the trigger, when the license renews?
Right.
They're going to review the HCAs at that time?
Each, whenever, everything is based on when the license was issued.
Okay.
So that's the year. So, after, we can't get mitigation money upfront, we have to bill them within 30 days after the close of the year, which is their year, and if they don't agree with the fees, they can appeal to the CCC. They have to be reasonably related to all the costs, and, you know, you can't charge fees that other businesses aren't charged. So, we took all these into consideration when we redid the HCA with Lucky Green Ladies, and it was sent off to their attorney, and we tried to schedule a meeting with him before this meeting to talk about it, but we haven't heard, he may be off for the holidays already, I don't know. But hopefully, as soon as he gets back and responds, we'll be back, hopefully, to get that finalized. I don't, I mean, pretty much, we're following the guidelines as they're written, so. I gave you a draft of what was sent to him, so just wait and see.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions or follow-ups on that? Denise?
Yeah, one quick question. Mike, some of the mitigation fees being held in escrow, that's something you do normally for other business types, too, that would have pollutants, for instance, that you'd want to mitigate, like when they leave. So you could do the same for the manufacturing facilities, I would imagine, because there's potential pollutants that they could leave behind at that manufacturing plant.
Would like to, but they're saying in here, we can't do that.
It says unless you do it for other similar businesses, which we do, right? We do today.
Well, I'll check with them on that and see if that's something that we could look at.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any other questions? All right, so obviously, we can't vote on the HCA agreement tonight because it's being reviewed by the attorneys for Lucky Green Ladies, so, but hopefully, we'll have, in early January?
Hopefully.
We'll have an agreement. That would be great. All right. Next up is the discussion of the structure of the Founder's Day Committee.
Yeah, I just wanted to check with you on, so, a couple things. Well, one, the length of term, do you want to have the appointments be one-year, three-year staggered, or just want to say it's a standing committee, once you're appointed, you're on there, and if someone drops off, you just appoint somebody else?
I'm fine with it being a standing committee.
Yeah.
Because it's so hard to get people to volunteer for that.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
Take it while you can, right?
And I don't think there's any need to bring it back every year and vote on it, and get more people and all that kind of stuff, so, all right, so.
Took them up, she knocked out.
Yeah.
And right now
Should we need to vote on that?
Right now, we have 13 members.
Yeah.
Just set it at that.
Yeah, let's go with that. We'll just, and I think we'll do 13, just do 13 members.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to have alternates, but
No.
No, because of 13, that's funny.
Anyone can attend the meeting, and
Right.
Maybe some people want to help, but don't really want to
There's going to be a lot of people that are going to help, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I know, having to be on the committee.
Right. All right, is that it?
That's good.
You don't need to vote for that, right?
You might as well just say
All right.
Establish the
So I'll motion to establish the 13-member committee, standing committee.
Second.
For the Founder's Day.
I'll thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Great. And then, next up is the DCJIS Model Cory Policy.
We want to have a Cory policy on file, in case the state ever comes out, and we're required to keep all Corys in locked cabinets, and we only keep them for as long as the purpose is necessary, and we just want to make sure, if you were to adopt this policy, that we'll put this on file and make sure that anyone from the Treasurers Office by itself that handles Corys will follow these recommended guidelines by the state.
I didn't have any issues with the wording. Do you guys have any questions or comments?
Just had some background questions.
Sure.
What did we use before? Nothing?
We did have a Cory policy on files.
Okay. And are there other options to consider, or is this really the only one?
This is really the one, the model one that the state put out.
Okay.
Is this required by the state?
Yeah.
Is this the same system as, like the baseball leagues and other sports leagues use, the same one?
And they may do sorries, too, if they're dealing with kids.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Any other questions?
Okay.
Comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the DCJIS Model Cory Policy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Great. I don't think we have any topics not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours of the meeting. So, moving ahead to old business, we're going to get an update from Bill Lippincott regarding the Norton Employment Support Group. I know Bill couldn't make it here tonight, so
I'm here instead of him.
So Barbara is here.
Yes.
So you're up, Barbara.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, as you all know, the Employment Support Group has been functioning at the Trinity area and Congregational Church every two weeks for about 15 years now. Took a little break, it started in the early 1990s, took a little break, and then for the last 15 years, we've been there. So the group is open to anyone who is either unemployed or underemployed, and we meet with them, we go through a process of reflection, exploration, and then looking at their interview skills, and trying to help them with any obstacles that they have to getting a new job. We're very fortunate, the church provides us with the space for free, and we meet every second week. We're on a hiatus for Christmas right now, and our next meeting will be on January 9th, but we welcome any resident of Norton, we've had residents from Franklin, we've had residents from numerous other towns, and sometimes we only have one person with us, and that's fine, too, because it gives us a chance to really coach them during that meeting. The meeting lasts from 8:30 until 10:00 AM, and we'd love you to tell anyone that you know who's in that situation to come and join us, and we'd like to have an opportunity to help them as much as we can.
Sounds great. Do you, can they just come to show up, or do they have to, you know, register, or email, or anything like that, or can they just show up?
They can just come. The one thing I don't have on here is, well, I have my own phone number and my colleague's phone number is on there, but they can also check the church website, tccnorton.org, and that will let them know when the next meeting is, or if we're postponing the meeting for any reason. But the sign is on the back door, they can just come in the back door, walk along to the parlor, and we're done in the parlor.
That's great.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say, would you be okay if we shared this, like on
No, absolutely share it, yes. We'd be delighted to see anyone.
Yeah, that's great.
That's great.
Okay, then we will, we will share it.
Okay.
Far and wide.
Yeah.
If you want to share it on, like, the town page, that'd be great as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. All right. Back to the code of conduct.
Oh, I have it.
I got a motion to table it, so.
Okay.
I'll motion to table it.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we should hold off till Meg's here, too, because I want to get everybody's input on it, so, but, let's make a commitment, the next meeting, the next meeting, we are going to
I'm still going to table it.
Is that, you table it at the next meeting. Then we are, we'll do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, we're all going to commit to reading it and being ready, next meeting.
Ready.
Okay. Denise is ready. I do, I do want to have everybody here for it, just so we can have a discussion about it and answer any questions and all that, so with Meg not being here tonight, we'll put it off till the next meeting, which I think we'll talk about in a little bit, about when that's going to be.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's my commitment to you, is that we will
It's not, for me, this is our thing, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I do want to, actually, I want to get that one put away and done, so we can move on to some of the other ones we wanted to look at, too, so.
Yeah.
So, all right, so we have a motion to table it until the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, well said. Storm update. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. Yeah, so, the dedication for the town report. So, I think we discussed it at a prior meeting, to, we have someone in mind for the dedication. Alec is going to work with Mike's office on putting together the dedication. I don't think we need to really go into too much detail on that, so, and then, once that's done, I think the annual report is done, right? So, okay? All right, cool.
On the storm, I want to thank all the Public Safety Department and the Highway Department for all the work they did during that storm. The town fared pretty well, you know, like, my town was completely out, 60, it was 99% out. We did have some areas where poles came down, Lincoln Street, and Cobb Street had a wire down.
North Washington.
Yeah, North Washington had a tree down. There are other areas, but for the most part, it wasn't that bad. But the fire department had 58 calls between 6:30 and 3:30 in the afternoon. You'd see the trucks come in, and they'd just turn around and come back out again, and they were constantly moving, and the chief is working on the after-action report, and, you know, I think National Grid could have been a little more responsive to, you know, the chief, as far as areas of town, but he had areas that he targeted that were critical, we needed roads open, and next thing you know, they're working somewhere else, and so, we really want to work again with, talk to National Grid on this and about the responsiveness. I know it was very frustrating for the chief to, you know, they asked us to give them our priority areas, why do we do it if you're not going to look at the list? So, it's something that we have to talk about in the future, when he's going to work on it, and we'll, you know, contact National Grid and have a discussion about it.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to bring up, I know it was online, and I talked to a few of the first responders on it, if there's a barricade up, don't drive around the barricade, just wait for somebody to direct you. I guess this happened several times during the storm, and it's very dangerous, I mean, could have been power lines, people could have killed, I mean.
The best one I liked.
You can't make it up. Random North Washington Cobb Street, Cobb Street, the wires were down and sparking for hours. People were
If there was somebody that went around it and up onto somebody else's lawn just to try to get around it, and it was just, it's just dangerous.
So the chief was out there, and this guy drove around the barrier, over someone's lawn, and then even drove over a part of the tree, and had a branch stuck under his car. She's like, whoa, whoa, what are you doing? You just went around the barrier, and he, he didn't see him. You didn't see, you grew up on someone's front lawn, you get around him, you didn't see him, why didn't you just hit him?
It's just so dangerous.
Oh, yeah.
It's frustrating, it's tough to control other people's actions, but National Grid, as far as the response, given the priority list of areas by the fire chief. given the priority list of areas by the fire chief, not going in order. That's something we can't control.
I mean, we understand they can't go up in the bucket truck during high winds. But right after that, you know, the poles on fire on Lincoln Street, we just need you to flip a circuit somewhere and shut that power.
In my place on Minkin Avenue, I didn't lose power at all.
Good.
Lucky me.
Yeah, lucky you. Yeah, and the, it looked to me like it was a lot of like actual trees too, not just branches that were down. So that also, I think, has a big...
It does. National Grid has done a good job about being proactive and going and trimming the branches over the wires. But when the tree falls...
Yeah, yeah.
Not much you can do.
We have trees.
Bad trees. It's in New England.
Before that storm, my wife and I were driving. And I was saying, as we're driving, look at how many dead trees there are around. I'm just amazed. Like everywhere you go, there's just dead trees everywhere.
Yeah. I also wanted to mention, I got the notices from the alert system, which I thought were great too. There was one that went out that said, like, everybody stay home. You know, people are out working and all that kind of stuff. So it's good to see that system working. And if people are not signed up for that, they should sign up for it because it's really helpful to get the information about what's going on in town. You get it texted, you can get a phone call, you can get an email, all that kind of stuff. And that's all accessible through our, through the town's website, so.
And Kevin Stone, didn't get so bad. I went to Cozy Pub for my lunch to support North Park's work. And West Main Street was blocked on Olympic Street because of a tree down.
Yeah.
One other issue we have, just from, I don't know if you're aware of it, on North Washington is where, closer down, I'm trying to think, near the Purcell Park, I don't know if you know where that is. But the, where the trail hits the road, they've now created like a dam where the water used to flow off the road. And so during these bad rainstorms, the entire road is being covered with water. We've let the design engineer and the state engineer know that something's gonna be done. And they supposedly have figured out a solution, but I don't know when they're gonna put that solution in play.
What spot is it?
What's that?
What spot is that?
It is right down by, as you go up North Washington towards Mansfield, just before you get to Newcombe, where the trail comes, crosses the road right there. The water will cover the whole road during the storm.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other reports or...
Just on the projects, the COA, the rough wiring's almost done and the sprinkler system. Gas has been connected to the road. Water, we're still waiting for National Grid in Verizon. And they really need them to get in there and get that done because they need to get the parking lot done and they don't want to be digging it up. And there's two, there's three poles, I think, that have to go up. One for Verizon, two for National Grid.
There's three, yeah.
So we're, hopefully, they're gonna get out there soon because they really need to start getting the heat inside the building. And as I said at the town hall, they're still working on the roof. They're starting putting the tieback on the sides of the building. And hopefully, windows are gonna go in next week, so we'll get the building all tight.
Great.
And when we walked it the other day at the senior center, I was, from the community room, you can look out and you can actually see the water. It looked nice, so. It'll be a nice, nice one.
Is that still looking like spring opening or more like...
Somewhere around June, I think.
For occupants.
That's great.
The town hall probably is August, I would think.
The Community Center, Community Senior Center is, the pictures do not do it justice. It's, just being inside the building is gigantic.
That's great.
And there's so many, there's what, four or five activity rooms?
Three big rooms and the big cafeteria style, it's huge. Like the room Mike was talking about that has that, that big window in back.
Yeah, that's the biggest one.
Multitude windows.
The patio, go right outside.
It's gonna be a beautiful facility.
Yeah, on top of that room though, there's, there's three or four other giant function rooms that are huge. They're well bigger than these rooms here.
It can fit the existing COA inside. One of those rooms.
Well, that's great. That's great. Cool. All right. Is that it?
That's it.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would I, would you allow me to give an update on recent class America?
Yeah. Please. Yeah.
This past Saturday, I'd like to thank Pat Tarantino. She's an absolute workhorse with that. I think everybody that knows her knows everything she does with that. Along with a multitude of other volunteers. And it was, it was a great ceremony. It was a great day for it. And we had, Senator Feeney spoke and State Rep Steve Howard spoke. It was a beautiful day. And I just want to thank Pat Tarantino because it's, that's wonderful. And, you know, everybody else that does a lot of work behind the scenes for that.
It was a huge turnout of people too, this show.
It was, it was great weather.
A lot of people.
That's great.
It was great weather for it. So.
And kids too, which was...
Yes.
Yeah, there were.
They were attending their kids, yeah. I remember last year, it was, it was freezing. It was very cold. But there was still a good amount of people there too.
Yeah, and it was perfect weather for it. It was close to 50 degrees and it was not too bad.
Yeah, that's good.
Very bright sun.
I did want to mention to Pat, next time I see her, I was driving down, driving home from work on 128, and I saw the big, the trailer that she wants to bring in for the... Yeah, I was actually driving right next to it. I was gonna try to take a picture, but that would have been safe. But, but no, that's, that's, that's great that it was well attended. Yeah, that's awesome.
The day the truck came, she came to the town hall with plates for everyone. Everyone went out front, and the truck went by.
That's awesome. And then also, I know since our last meeting, the lighting of the common and Santa Claus and all of that was unfortunately had to be canceled because we've been having such lousy weather. And that day was included. But then we were able to, some folks were able to get a Santa Claus out there.
Including you, Trillian. I got a photo sent and it was on my Facebook page.
Same as the recent customer.
So thank you to everyone who volunteered and was, and to Melissa and everybody for kind of putting something together last minute and making that happen. So that's, that's really awesome stuff, so. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Lawrence?
Is there any other report?
That's it. All right, Lawrence?[1698.54]